Good evening, everyone. This is the October 1st, 2025 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Before we move on, I'll just want to mention that this meeting is being recorded by Trulens Community Media. You can view the city's meetings live and replay them on Cable Channel 799, and meetings are also streamed live and archived on the City of Cottage Grove's YouTube channel. So if you're interested in that, you're welcome to do that. So the next, of course, item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Claussen?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and no one did sign up. And so I'll just ask one last question. Anybody in the audience want to speak on open forum? All right. Seeing none, I will then close open forum and we'll move to five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Claussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right. Now we're going to move to presentations. We have two this evening. We do have a guest joining us this evening. Our county attorney is going to give us an update. Kevin Magnuson is here, and we want to welcome him. He's going to share some statistical information and some data with us. So welcome.
Just for starters, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. So thank you for having me. My name is Kevin Magnuson. I'm the county attorney for Washington County, and it's a real pleasure to be here. I don't really have an agenda other than come and say hi and give you a little bit of overview of what's going on in the office and maybe some of the things that we've noticed over the last couple of years. So I live in Lake Elmo, and the house that I grew up in, I bought it from my dad. The house was built in 1889, so he sold it to me as is. A lot of his stuff is still there. He lives in Woodbury now, but it's kind of held together by spackle and wallpaper. And, you know, it's a, it's, that's kind of a hobby whether I like it or not. I know it's a bad day when my wife has got a real estate agent wandering around the driveway, you know, which happens, you know, every couple of months. I went to Minneapolis Academy, Lake Elmo Elementary, Minneapolis Academy, and then into Wheaton College in Chicago. I was in the military during the first Gulf War. I was an officer. My unit was in Saudi and then in Kuwait, but by the time I got to Germany to fly there after my airborne training, the ground war was over. So I just kind of hung out in Germany for a while. When I got out, I was in graduate school in Germany and Belgium. I went to a German university to do a PhD in philosophy and then actually wound up at a Belgian university in the Dutch-speaking part of Belgium. And I ended up getting kind of what we considered a master's on steroids there. And so then considering that I wanted a career that didn't involve me buying a Santa suit, you know, I decided to go to law school. What are you doing, you're a philosopher? I went to University of Minnesota Law School, went back to Belgium, and my first job out of law school was at the European Commission in their antitrust enforcement division. So a little bit different than the career path that I'm currently on, but, you know, like, like all good Minnesotans, I followed the umbilical express back home, and I was in Minneapolis practicing complex business litigation for 20 years before my good friend Pete Orpoot talked me into leaving that miserable rat race and joining the friendly confines of the Washington County Attorney's Office. So how many people knew, met, knew Pete?
Yeah.
To know him is to love him or not, you know? I miss him every day, and if you don't know him, I think you're worse off for it. He was, he was something truly special, and I've done the best to kind of keep his legacy going in the office. Our office has 61, well, 61 and a half employees. I get half, not short, but half time, and it's about split between staff and attorneys, about half and half. We've got five law clerks as well, typically going in the summer, and a couple of senior law clerks that work pretty much year round. So I'm going to go through some of these things kind of quickly, and so I may not be tracking with the slides exactly, but, you know, our criminal division, there's 12 attorneys, five victim witness coordinators, and then we've got seven attorneys in juvenile and nine attorneys in our civil divisions. And we, I just say this, and I don't say this lightly at all, but when I'm looking at the criminal work that we do, you know, public safety is my paramount concern, and that sounds obvious, but I think there's been a movement maybe in the last five years or so where, when there's an attempt to reintroduce someone into the community, you know, someone who's an offender, and there's an attempt at rehabilitation, which I think is all very important. The reason I say public safety is my paramount concern is I don't believe the risk of that person reentering society should be borne on their neighbors. And I think it's pretty easy to see some of the more, maybe the more progressive prosecutors that are bending, you know, towards the direction of trying to get, circumvent the, you know, the prison part of the, of the, of the conviction and the sentence, and go straight to rehabilitation. And I just feel very strongly that the risk should not be borne on the community members that may or may know that they're living next to someone like that. So talk a little bit about the complaints that we have. We typically go to about, you know, we charge about $1,200 a year, and we get about 1,400 referrals from law enforcement. So it's about 80, 85% check, which is really pretty good. The reason that it stayed pretty stable and that we only have that 50% that, you know, is really, is really due to just the quality of law enforcement in Washington County. I mean, the referrals we're getting are solid, and, you know, sometimes there's not enough evidence. Sometimes the victim isn't cooperating, or sometimes there's another case in a jurisdiction. And then sometimes, you know, we use our prosecutor discretion to, to, you know, go down an ultimate path where a person may end up going into diversion for less serious crimes, and we think there's a, an opportunity for someone to, you know, really get their life straightened out. But we're fortunate to have a very strong partnership with all the law enforcement in Washington County. You know, Chief Kerner has been phenomenal partner. I was with him on Night to Unite, rode around, and the mayor as well, and, so he's, he's been great, and I think you're very fortunate to have the quality of law enforcement that you have in Cottage Grove. So I will, I just want to point out, we'll kind of go through this quickly, but the, you know, it's no surprise that in 2021, 2020 and 2021, the auto thefts, everything having to do with auto thefts just skyrocketed. The good news is that, you know, we're trending downwards, and I expect 2025 to be about the same or lower. We're still, still too high, but that hump that we knew kind of was there at COVID, it's recognizable, but we're moving away from it in the right direction. In terms of crim sex, criminal sexual conduct, you know, there's a little bit of a spike at 2021, but those cases are so, it's so difficult to pinpoint the reason why, you know, we can charge and can't charge some of those cases. It's hard to draw a real conclusion from, from these numbers. And then homicides, you know, they're kind of all over depending on, you know, the year that they come to us. Sometimes they'll, you know, we'll have a number of homicides going now, you know, if there's five in 2024. There haven't been any in 2025 that have, that have been charged. I think there's some that have been investigated, so most of the stuff we're working on is past cases. But the number is a little higher than one might expect, considering for a long time, you know, Washington County had one or two. And I think that's just reflecting the increased population and just some changes in society that I think are, is making the society a little bit more violent, and we're seeing that borne out in, I think, most of the crime trends. Auto theft, so, you know, it used to be that smoking dope and shoplifting were kind of the entry level crimes, and that's when people started encountering law enforcement. You know, now one of the biggest things is joyriding. Joyriding is this phenomenon because someone 12, 13, 14 years steals a car. In this case, the Kia Challenge. Here, you can see the council's been torn up, and they can, there's a gap in the ignition where you stick a metal object about the size of a pen drive, USB drive, and it completes the circuit and starts the car. Not super difficult to do in the older Kias and Hyundais. It's no longer the case, I'm happy to say, because I have a Hyundai, and I'm hoping some kid doesn't think it's an old one and he can break the window and try to start it. But the, you know, somebody steals a car, the first thing they want to do is get their buddies, right, show them what they're doing. So then they start driving around in a stolen car, doing what you do in a stolen car, and that's commit crimes. And pretty soon, the person that's invited along who, you know, hasn't been in a joyriding or hasn't been in this, you know, in a, in a, in a scenario where there's, they're committing criminal offenses, you know, they'll, they'll start to join in on the, you know, whatever they're doing, and then, so you have some minor crimes there, but pretty soon they want to do the, take the Kia Challenge themselves. And so you're seeing when they come into encounter of law enforcement, it's usually kind of at that point. And at that point, they've had this, you know, this journey from the kind of things that we would think of as normal indiscretions or criminal infractions of a kid to something that is quite a bit more serious before they hit the justice system. And I, I think we're seeing that pattern. It's, it's pretty remarkable and pretty clear. Now, I should say that, talking about car thefts, I'll talk a little bit more about it. One of the things that has been really successful and helpful to us has been the, the automatic license plate readers, the flock cameras, I think is the vendor that most of people use. I believe you are getting them if you haven't already, because I know I saw the approval stuff go through, but they've been really successful in Woodbury, you know, and just getting a hit on, on cars with, you know, with the crim history associated with the license plate number, knowing where that is. There's something, I'll just kind of depart from my stats and stuff to opine a little bit. You know, there are some people who feel like, oh, this is, you know, it's a violation of people's civil rights and that sort of thing, and I, I mean, there are ways it could be used that way. I think the normal safeguards that we had where you need to get a warrant, that thing, sort of thing, to use this to follow someone protects a lot of that. But what, what's interesting about this is that when there's a hit on a license plate, nobody knows the demographics of the drivers. They just know that there's a car with a file attached to it and a location, and then whatever happens from there is based on that legitimate tip. So if you're concerned about pretextual stops and that sort of thing, you know, that's really not the case in, when you've got an automatic license plate reader. So this is the, this is the number that really kind of blows me away, and it's just, I think it's just indicative of some of the problems we have in society. Don't have the answers, but I can say that, you know, when you look at 2018, and there were 35 instances of charged someone fleeing from law enforcement in a motor vehicle, up to 111 in 2022. I mean, and we, we know why that is, right? Can editorialize it a little bit, that, you know, I don't get involved in who's right and who's wrong. I will say in hindsight that the idea of, you know, not having kids who don't have a lot of structure running around on the street with a $700 iPhone, you know, isn't the greatest thing for our society. I mean, at the time, my daughter's nine, and it took three adults to get her to do online schooling. You know, I mean, you needed that structure and that environment. If you didn't have it, you weren't, I mean, not a ton of kids were just doing it, you know, for their own edification. They, there needed to be some structure. And then having kids out of school, I think where there's not, you know, that teacher or the band director or the counselor or whatever that provides some structure that they may not be seeing otherwise is really important, and I think we're seeing some of the consequences of not having that. But of course, the worst thing about this is just the danger that puts the officers in. So this is Oakdale PD dash cam video. I mean, it's very real, you know, and the, and the, the danger to officers, the public is very, very significant. This is in the LA Fitness on 694 and 95. Again, poor Oakdale officers.
Get out of the vehicle now! Get out of the vehicle! Get on the ground! Get on the ground! Get down! Get down! Get in! Look out, Cofe!
His girlfriend's still behind the wheel.
Get down! Look out, Cofe! 6500, we got multiple cars getting hit by this vehicle. Get out of the way!
So again, I showed that video, just, you can see, I mean, there is that drive that some people have. You know, she had a serious drug problem. I don't think that was her entire problem, but she was convicted of a number of crimes, including this one. So this, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. This is just from a case that we had showing the cellphone data, the location data, and showing how we can get this with a warrant. We can get this and, and do the, the tracking of locations. But it is important to know this is, all this is pursuant to a warrant. So any of these things, it could be an invasion or concerning privacy, it has to be authorized by a judge. Talk a little bit about our human trafficking task force. I'm really proud of it. I'm proud of the role that Cottage Grove has played in it. Detective Brian Campbell, that was a good part of it when he was there, and now you have Jeffrey Dean. I've had a chance to meet him a couple of times, and, you know, I think that, that trafficking task force is doing great things right now. We've shifted the focus a little bit. We're still doing the stings and the recovery operations that are larger scale, but the, the sort of investigating and, and tracking of individuals that are victims or engaged, you know, on either side of it has really ramped up, and I think we're seeing a lot more bang for your buck, if you will, in that kind of approach. You can get a number of people in a sting, and it's important to do that because it sends a message, you know, that, that we're out there. But what we're really seeing, these benefits are, you know, the, the recovery operations or efforts to locate someone, particularly with runaways. That's been a big focus of mine. You know, the, it used to be that when you're a runaway kid, you know, you go down to the Greyhound station to look for them. Now it's their phone. I mean, these kids are on, there's some sort of social media well before they, they leave, and often they're communicating with someone that they haven't met before, and, and that's under false pretenses. There was a case, as you know, from Cottage Grove, 14-year-old girl, Cottage Grove's grandmother reported her missing after about a week, and the officers that were contacted, contacted Brian Campbell because he was on the task force. And we have a lot of tools and processes that, that we can deploy very quickly compared to, you know, I think the, the normal course of business, just because of the trafficking work. So we know how to get these warrants quickly, we can get to the phones quickly, we can get the, the location data, and that's what happened in this case. So they figured out that she was communicating over an app called Text Now, and there are a ton of these things where you get a free number and, you know, anonymous texting, and there are some that even do geolocation so you can identify people who are within, you know, 300 feet or half a mile, and it's all anonymous. But in this case, they were able to do, get the location data and determine that she was likely at Boyd's Motel in Newport, and they went there. The, the trafficker was not there, she was. She'd been abused, you know, for over a week. She was sitting there, you know, with very little clothing and was clearly distraught and, and, you know, let me get back to where I was here. You know, it seemed like a long time, and it is. I mean, we, that's just awful, but to get to someone that quickly means that there's a chance that you could, you know, really intervene and prevent this course that's just kind of a, a long slippery slope into just a miserable and, and life, and just one that's really difficult to leave. In this case, they were able to get the phone from the girl and text the trafficker and get him to come back to the motel and arrest it. So he was charged with first degree criminal sexual conduct and got 100 months in prison and will register as a sex offender for the rest of his life. So I mentioned a little bit on the sting operations. This is kind of an older slide, but these are Washington County folks that have been convicted. You know, it's important that this, the, the human trafficking unit that we have is local. It's, it's centered on Washington County, and it's really important because, you know, if you're just affiliated with the BCA or something, for example, I mean, there's a lot that goes on in Hennepin and Ramsey County that may affect, you know, Washington County, but having a dedicated trafficking unit that's really well established and pretty well known is, is, is an exceptional asset to the county. You know, it's a little bit like spraying your lawn. You know, the moment you stop spraying it for weeds, the dandelions come right back. And that's a little bit like, you know, with the sex trafficking, that the moment the pressure's off, it's right back there. But because we've got 94 coming through and, you know, some other thoroughfares, Minneapolis-St. Paul is a higher traffic area, and I think there's some funding issues that are always present, especially during something like this when it's tempting to want to cut from this, but I think that this is an area that affects a lot of, of the, our efforts to combat crime and particularly trafficking. So this is a slide, it's, it's, it's the same person from the first encounter. Now, this is, this is several years old, probably more than that, from a national charity organization that published it, but you can just see the, the absolute devastating consequences of this kind of life. And when we do the rescue issues, you know, there are counselors there. We're giving them phones and, and a way to try to leave the, the life that they're in, and most of them are saying right away, yes, I need to get clean, I need this, and then within a half an hour, they're back up, their, their ads are back up. And if people ask, how can I help? How can I get involved in this area? Pete was really good at motivating people, and I think Cast and some other places started from some of his talks, but it's really on this recovery area where there's just so little resources, and it's a resource-intensive prospect to get someone out of this life and, and, and do a full recovery. Now, there's a new group home that's opened in, in Oakdale. It's just gorgeous. It's an upper-middle-class neighborhood. I'm not sure all the neighbors knew what was going in there when they built it, but, you know, it's, 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 they've been well received, and the, the, there's full-time counseling. It's, it's, it's a window to the world that you could It's, it's, it's a window to the world that you could have, whereas otherwise we just have, you get out, go to a shelter that's maybe a half step up from the, the world that you were in. And it's sort of hard to tell someone, okay, now this is, this is your, this is the life to, you know, the better life that you want and it's going to start in us, in this shelter. And so the, the, the name of the, of the, the charity is called Cory's House, the group home. And I think it's, I think it's just getting the last of its state approvals and should be operating soon. And we've already got some folks identified that, that we'd like to see there. I'll talk, just talk really briefly about our juvenile prosecution. You know, the vast majority of kids do stupid things that we encounter, you know, and some of them are criminal offenses. And I'd say probably, you know, 70, 75% are in that category. Go through a diversion program. They get whatever anger management or chemical or mental health treatment they need. Sometimes they just need, you know, a little bit of a scare and some sorting out, but they go through the program, we never see them again. I mean, it's, it's very successful on these lower level, early criminal offenses for juveniles. And it starts to get a little more serious. I would say that there are probably about 10 defendants a year that cause us most of our work. And those are the serious crimes that you hear about, the carjackings, the, the assaults, the, the more serious violent crimes. And typically at that point, this person's been a part of the system for, for a long time. And that's a whole nother topic, but the, our inability to deal with this level of crime with juveniles is, is just tragic and it's going to take a, a, a whole rethinking and reorienting of the, of the, of the system. But we do certify when necessary, when the crimes deserve it. And, you know, Pete used to always say the right size hammer for the right size nail. We take that very seriously. So again, I'm just going to point it out, the vehicle theft, this is with juveniles. Again, that spike in the COVID, then down to 7% or seven last year, which we haven't charged a juvenile case, a juvenile carjacking case since 2023. We just had an adult, I used to be able to say that with the adults. We just had a case a few months ago where a guy calls an Uber driver at 3:30 in the morning from one of the fitness clubs, gets close to his house, tries to take the driver's phone. The driver runs out of the car. Now the guy's sitting there in a, in a, in an Uber and the police are coming, so he jumps in and he takes off. And they, you know, let us, let the cops on 100 mile an hour chase, they threw some stop sticks down. But, I mean, that's not necessarily the scenario you're thinking of when you think of carjacking. It's still serious, but the, I think the, the image sometimes we have of life, you know, post-COVID or whatever is, it is, this kind of dangerous crime is lurking around every corner. And we just haven't seen that in Washington County, thankfully. So here is a, this was a two car, seven kids, 12 to 15, were in two cars. They were Cabela's. Squads came, they rammed the, the first squad and took off, down Ideal Avenue at 110 miles an hour. It dead ends in the Stillwater Boulevard there, so they bailed. And there's a pit maneuver there. You're seeing this kid running. He's 15, he's got a gun in his left hand and I think it's a phone in his right, right? And that's kind of a wake up call when you look at some of the stuff. And again, I'm not saying that that's what's commonplace, but that's the world we live in and that's kind of the challenges that we're facing. So, thank you for having me. You know, I think that the takeaway is that we're doing everything we can to, to keep Washington County safe, to work with people, to, to do as much good as we can in the community. And the partnership between the county attorney's office and the cities, and in particular the city law enforcement has been really remarkable. I didn't have any idea that, that that was unique in many respects, but apparently a lot of sheriffs and county attorneys and our chiefs of police don't get along with, you know, something to do with egos and type A personalities, I don't know. But thank you so much for, for, for having me. If there's anything that I can answer, please let me know.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for sharing the information. I'll start with Councilmember Clausen.
Thank you so much. I, I also want to echo what he said too, is our department working well with the county attorney's office. Having worked with his attorney's office in a prior life, prior job, I know I could call at any time and get somebody on the phone, no matter what time of day it was, and they'd give me some good advice. And thank you for explaining the flock cameras as that system starts rolling out. There's a lot of questions the public has, you know, is this big brother? And it really isn't. Thanks, thanks for saying that. And I also wanted to just comment about the quality of the attorneys in your office. I know, just thinking here real quick, I just wrote down four names of your attorneys that have gone on to be judges in the area. So that's a, kudos to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Sounds good. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you very much. Great having you here. Appreciate you coming down and boy, you can say Pete was one of a kind all day long and still not enough. Great man and, and you're doing a really nice job succeeding somebody who's pretty hard to succeed, to be frank. You mentioned in your presentation that, you know, the, the various cities and, you know, various county entities seem to really work well together. And as you were speaking about that, the drug task force popped into my head. And I wondered if you might just take a moment or two to explain how that really works to the public, because there's, you know, all these various officers from different departments coming together under one umbrella, but boy, they seem to be pretty effective.
Yeah. These crimes in general, you know, they're not fixed to a specific location. And so they, they implicate the entirety of Washington County often. And so the drug task force brings in law enforcement and a member from our office who's on the task force to investigate and then bring for charges and then, and then for us to, to review those charges and then file a complaint. We're also very involved in the process of guiding the investigation in terms of, you know, what you can do and not do, make sure that people are aware of the pitfalls. So help with the warrants, sometimes helping with, you know, maybe look at this, don't do that. You know, it's kind of a waste of time or something that we can't prove. But that, that drug task force has been very successful. And I know some of the, the fentanyl busts that we've had have been pretty sizable.
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal, yeah. So pretty big.
Good. And, and the other thing that you mentioned is, you know, trying to work on youth interdictions and, you know, trying to sort of get out ahead of things. And I love that the county has started to implement these embedded social workers and things. I think that's making a big difference in crime prevention versus being reactive. But I also know that at least our department has had a lot of success working with the youth service bureau. And I know that's an organization you think very highly of. And I wondered if you might just chat for a moment about some of the things that they do as a nonprofit in South Washington County and Washington County in general to help with some of that youth challenge.
Thank you for bringing that up. And I really probably should have mentioned that when I talked about the success that we've had in diversion. The youth service has been cornerstone for us. I mean, they're the ones that are supplying the diversion programming that is absolutely essential to get folks on the, on the right track. And, you know, like you said, it's a nonprofit. The county and I know the law enforcement across Washington County, our office, other offices, like our community corrections and some other departments in Washington County have been really involved. And we're just fortunate that we don't have to try to, try to create that from scratch, that we have, you know, a longstanding organizations that's really good at it. And that's why we're, I think we've had the success we've had. So hats off to, to YSB.
And we're very fortunate here in that the mayor actually was, you know, president of the board of the YSB locally here for how many years was it?
Six or eight.
Yeah, something like that. So we've had the opportunity to influence to some of the programming that is required because as times change, the programming needs to change. But to your point, I think they really are a phenomenal partner as a nonprofit in the county. And I know that you work with them a lot, we work with them a lot. So I appreciate the, the plug in terms of some of the things that they do with the youth in the area. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Sounds good. No other questions, Council? Only other thing I'll say other than thank you for coming and sharing with us this evening. I know before we had the meeting or before you did your presentation, and you kind of alluded to it in, in some of your comments, that there, there is in some parts of the metro, or maybe some counties in the metro, that don't necessarily look at crime the same way, if you will. Maybe not charging people for, you know, car theft or things like that. And if I heard right, and that's why I thought I'd just let you reiterate it again, you know, if somebody, a kid or whoever steals a car in Washington County, with all due respect, the full weight of the law and enforcement and such is going to come down on them. It isn't, it isn't what happens in some of the counties to our west. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely correct, Mayor. It's a, I mean, it's difficult enough in the, in the juvenile justice system to bring const, you know, consequences for actions to bear because they are kids. And so it's kind of set up so that they're not punished in the same way as adults. But I think in, in some of, some of the other counties that may come to mind, I mean, it's sort of, the pendulum kind of swung the other direction a little bit. And that's almost, there's almost a inclination to, to not try or to look for ways that are purely designed to communicate and understand something, which is really, really important. But I've seen enough of these, you know, especially particularly when they're on Zoom, you know, these hearings with the kids and they're, they're sitting on the couch, they're looking at their $300 sneakers and they, I mean, they're just not getting it. Whether they can't conceive of what, you know, conceptualize what's happening to them and what their future is going to look like, or they just don't care. It's not real effective. And so to your point, one of the things that, that I've insisted on is when we do detain, you know, or arrest a juvenile, when the crime is serious enough, I, I really want to make it at least inconvenient for the parents. Like you should have to go pick them up. And in some cases, like in this Cabela's case, you know, we charged him with everything we could ethically charge, knowing that they would, that would keep them in detention for two days. Now, it doesn't seem like very long, but it's a lot longer than they're getting in some other places. And, and that's about the right time because you keep them there long enough, they can figure out they can do the standing on their head, you know? But there has, there absolutely has to be consequences for actions, whether it's on the little level, you know, the most minor thing, just people having the rules reinforced is really important and that goes all the way through our juveniles to our adults. The other thing I'd like to talk a little bit about is, in the news, there's been quite a bit of talk about traffic, crime enforcement infractions. And I think that became sort of popular, you know, a few years ago to say, well, we think that these traffic, what they call contractual traffic stops has a disproportionate impact. And whether that's true or not, I think the data shows that it probably does, but that's not fixing the problems is to say we're not going to enforce those laws, right? I mean, if you've got problems, you address the problems. If there are people that are doing contractual stops, you better root them out, you know, and, and, and solve that problem, not hiding from it and saying, we're, we're just not going to enforce these crimes to keep our statistics in the right spot. And, you know, these things are happening in counties, but, you know, it stops at the border, right? This is not the way Washington County treats it. I personally think that law enforcement is doing us a service, you know, when they pull us over and say, hey, your taillights out, because that's dangerous, you know? How would I know that my brake lights are out if somebody didn't honk at me or somebody, you know, didn't tell me that? And if, you know, if there's evidence of a crime in the car, as a result of the officer looking at, I think it makes sense that that officer should be able to follow up on that with probable cause, get what they need and, and inquire further.
Sounds good. Well, thank you. And, and my only segue or comment on that is I, I do find it ironic that I do hear from our officers that when there's either car theft or whatever happening, and unfortunately I'll say that if there's a chase, we stop them because our police officers do stop them. And when they do, some of these criminals, whatever the age, says, well, you can't arrest me because, you know, they thought they were in Ramsey County or they thought they were in Hennepin County. And the answer by our officers, which is no, you are going to jail or you are going to detention or whatever. And I just wanted to throw that out there because unfortunately on the other side, when there are other counties around us that are not pursuing these things, to me, it's like opening the gates and a lot of saying it's okay everywhere, where we're saying, as you mentioned earlier, at your, at our border, and our border's Cottage Grove, but Washington County, no, you, you cross into our county, you can't cross into our community and you are going to be treated to the full extent of the law if you're doing something that's illegal. And so I just wanted to throw that out there.
We had a kid a couple of years ago who was hurt on a jail call, telling some of his buddies, don't, he was, he is a car theft, receiving stolen property found in a stolen car. He's like, don't come to Washington County, they're serious. I would love to put that on a billboard or put that on the air, like broadcast that 24/7 because we are.
Absolutely.
And I think we can see the result. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Well, move to our second item in the under presentations, which is the proclamation for fire prevention week. And I did pre-ask Councilmember Olson to read the proclamation and then we'll look for a motion in a second.
Thank you, Mayor. As the son of a firefighter, I don't think he's a former firefighter. I think they're always firefighters, it's kind of like being a Marine. Once you're a Marine, you're always a Marine. It's my honor to read this proclamation for fire prevention week 2025. It reads as follows. Whereas the city of Cottage Grove is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Cottage Grove and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, reports an increase in battery related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action. Buy only listed products. Charge batteries safely and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, an improper use such as overcharging, using off brand chargers without safety certification or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries helps prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas Cottage Grove first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety, education and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week and urge all the Cottage Grove residents to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services passed this, the first day of October 25, by Myron Bailey Mayor, as the undersigned. And with that, Mayor, I would make the motion that we accept this proclamation declaring October 5th through the 11th, Fire Prevention Week.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. Thank you for reading the proclamation. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second, Councilmember Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. We'll move right on here to seven, which is the consent agenda. Is there anything Council would like to pull on consent? Councilmember Olson?
E, please.
You want to pull E? Okay. Good. Any others coming, Council? All right. So we'll move right to E, which is the Cottage Grove Lions Fitness Equipment Donation. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item because the Cottage Grove Lions Club, of which I am the current president, is very proud of the work that we do with our public safety team and the city here in Cottage Grove on several different fronts. I, I wanted to point out that this is our latest donation, which is a donation of fitness equipment in the amount of $4,997.30 for the workout room here in Cottage Grove at, at City Hall. Just to kind of make a brief statement that this money was actually raised at the hometown heroes golf tournament that we had this year in partnership with our Mississippi River Valley.
in partnership with our, um, Mississippi River Valley Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team and the Cottage Grove V S, VFW. Uh, this was, you know, the Cottage Grove Lions portion of the proceeds from that tournament. And we're very proud to be able to take that, uh, round up $5,000 and donate it back to our friends here at the City of Cottage Grove, and specifically to, um, our public safety team and our first responders, who I know use that workout space. Uh, this is just one of those things where, as we mentioned earlier about the YSB, uh, local nonprofits giving back to the city. Uh, this is an expense the city doesn't have to incur because we were able to fundraise this money and donate it. So, uh, I hope that, um, everybody here at City Hall and, uh, anybody who works for the city will enjoy the new equipment. I know Captain Peterson from the public safety team, uh, really spent a lot of time and effort trying to ascertain the right equipment and find the, the pricing that we needed and, uh, work directly with our Lions Club to make this happen.
All right, thank you. So with that, um, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brithidi. Second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. See, you waited all that to hear, so everything in the consent agenda have been approved. So thank you.
Thanks for being here.
All right, Council, we'll move to number eight, which is eight A is to approve the bills.
Move the bills.
Pay the bills.
All right, I'll grab, uh, Councilmember Garza's, uh, the motion. Do you want to do the second?
Sure.
Councilmember Olson do the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Uh, nine, we do not have public hearings. Ten, we do not have bid awards. Eleven, we do not have anything on a regular agenda. We're all the way down to council comments or requests, number twelve, and I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Claussen.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Awesome, sounds good. Councilmember Broelson.
Mayor, I'll be brief, I've, uh, had a lot to say already this evening, but I wanted to take a moment here to congratulate the Public Safety and Parks Department on what appeared to be a very, very successful Public Works and Park Open House last week down at the, um, Public Works Facility. The, when I got there, uh, they were already parking cars across the street. Um, and Mayor, I know I, I saw you there and I understand Councilmember Garza was able to go as well. Um, the, the place was a zoo, it was packed. There were lots of families there, um, really fun seeing all the kids who, you know, were climbing on the trucks and what have you. I also want to thank, um, the, uh, union that represents our, uh, Public Works team down there, the Forty-Niners Union, for bringing their digger that the kids can actually sit in and operate and, um, they get to move sand from point A to point B. Uh, that's always a very popular thing at the open house events as well. And of course, all the other nonprofits that showed up to partner with us, including Pine Ridge Garden Club, who was there, and some others. So you guys did a, a really phenomenal job, Ryan and Zach and your teams. And it was certainly a lot of fun being there and, uh, even more so seeing all the smiles on people's faces. They, they really enjoyed it and you guys did a great job putting it together, thank you.
Only, only piggyback I'll put on there, Zach, is I think we've realized now that all you have to do is put a big pile of sand and some buckets. And holy cow, there was a lot of kids in that big pile that was out there. And that's all it was.
Young and old.
Yeah, it, it definitely was bath night for a lot of people.
It probably was. Uh, Councilmember Brithidi.
All right, well, I'll just mention that, uh, the Monster Bash Parade is coming around again, October twenty-fifth. And it, uh, it runs from, uh, the, uh, down by the administrative, the center for the, the school district on, uh, East Point Douglas Road. And, uh, it goes down to the, uh, by Applebee's and such. And it's always a good time. It starts at ten AM and hopefully we'll have some good weather. The way the weather is going right now, it, uh, you know, you never know, we might be in our shorts during the parade. But, uh, so it, uh, should be a fun time. You can obviously get information by going to the Strawberry Fest website and so forth. There's information out there also, so.
Fantastic. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Mayor. I will mention a couple of events and I will save the rest for you.
I have to.
So there are always a lot of fun things that happen here in Cottage Grove. And just in October, we still have a lot more fun that's going to be coming. So, um, Locally Grown Theater, they are showing Dracula, October seventh through the nineteenth, at the Cottage Grove City Hall Amphitheater. So that should be a lot of fun. And then our, um, Cottage Grove, um, Ice Arena is having the skating Spooktacular. So that'll be on October twenty-ninth, and there's two sessions for that, and it's only $10 per skater. So I think that will be a lot of fun. And then, of course, we have our pumpkin chunk that comes up right after Halloween, where you get to get dispose of your pumpkin in a fun way by throwing it off of a fire ladder or down a hill or, like, there's all types of ways that you can chuck your pumpkin. So it's always fun. Um, I've gone a couple of years now and I've always enjoyed it. So with that, I will leave the rest for you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So, uh, real, real quick on some of the, uh, interesting ones. So, uh, you, you talk about Fire Prevention Week, uh, which is going to be next week compared to when you watch this, uh, or I should say from this council, uh, meeting. But on October seventh, from five to seven, which I believe is a Tuesday, um, at the Central Fire Station is the Fire Department Open House. So encourage everybody to, uh, come out, um, see the vehicles, have some fun. They got some things where you shoot the hose, all that kind of stuff. I know they have like hot dogs and things like there, uh, those items there too. If you want to have something, uh, for a quick bite date, it's always a great turnout seeing the kids there at the fire station. And I also should mention, just want to make sure I get, like, yeah, this, so it's not going to, it's not necessarily coinciding with the Fire Department Open House, but there is a Fire Department Coloring Contest, uh, which artists from ages three to eleven uh, can celebrate Cottage Grove Fire Prevention by entering the coloring contest. Uh, coloring sheets are available on the Public Safety Facebook page, I think I saw that actually earlier today, or at City Hall or at the Central Fire Station. Uh, deadline to enter this contest is Monday, October thirteenth. Uh, there'll be three winners that will be chosen and invited to the fire station for a pizza party. So that's kind of cool. And then I also wanted to mention, uh, Mayor for a Day, because that obviously is coming up here, uh, in, uh, early November. Mayor for a Day, Mayor for a Day is, um, if, if you're interested, you just send a picture uh, or attach your handwritten essay, uh, and you can send it to communications@cottagroven.gov uh, by Friday, October seventeenth. Uh, just include your name, age, grade and school. Um, the honorary mayor will be picked up, uh, by the, the police chief in a squad car, uh, get a tour of Public Works, the fire station, uh, ride or drive the Zamboni, which I have not even done yet. Um, and, uh, and of course, then they get to, um, come up here and, uh, co, uh, co-mot, do a meeting, if you, if you will, here, uh, and so, and have some pizza. Uh, so I just wanted to throw that out there, every year that we've done it, uh, even earlier this year at the Food Truck Festival, our previous, uh, Mayor for a Day came up to me and literally said, hey, Mayor, how you doing? I said, how you doing, Mayor? So it was kind of cute to see, uh, how they, they do truly cherish that opportunity. So I wanted to, uh, just mention that. And then lastly, uh, again, depending on when you're, if you're watching this, you're watching live, uh, right now, uh, this coming Friday night is homecoming, uh, for Pike, Park High School. They are playing Coon Rapids. Uh, for football, uh, there is a parade, uh, prior to, um, uh, the football game as normal. And the parade starts at, uh, the crossroads on the corner of Eightieth and Jamaica and goes up to Park High School. Uh, and the parade, I believe, starts at five o'clock, I'm thinking. What's that?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen, yeah, I knew we had to line up like at four thirty. So, um, I know, uh, some of us alumni for Park will be, uh, in the parade. But, uh, if you want, there's going to be candy thrown and it's always a good time to celebrate our local high school. And, uh, hopefully they can, uh, take home a win. Uh, so that was it for me on that. Um, next item on our agenda is a workshop, which is open to the public. Uh, and it's to discuss the Ravine Parkway, which is Eighty-Fifth Street, DeKeats Avenue, the feasibility report. Uh, we do not have a workshop that's closed to the public, so we won't be adjourning in here. Uh, we will be adjourning in the conference room. So with that, everybody have a great, great week and go Wolf Pack.